Okay, we're going to open the April 3 meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board at 6:08 PM, whatever it is.
Three, four, three.
Four, three, 6:03 PM. I can't read from here. Okay, let's start out with the minutes. We have two of them, minutes of February 20, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 20.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do I have any amendments or corrections or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, minutes of March 20, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 20, 2018.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have an amendment to those minutes. At the end of the hearing on pride convenience, it says we closed the hearing. We did not close the hearing. We had a motion made to continue it to tonight, April 3, at 6:45 PM, and that motion was approved. And so the motion was to continue, not to, not to close. Any other amendments or corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
As amended?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are done. Okay, let's go to our waivers. The first one we have is New England Termite. Does somebody hear from there? Tracy, did we able to get in contact with New England Termite?
Yes, I did.
They said they would show up? No.
Just a message.
Okay, they didn't get back to you?
No.
Then we shall have to table that one again. This is, the application indicates a certain number of commercial vehicles, and we don't want, I don't want to proceed with the waiver until we have something in writing that says there aren't going to be commercial vehicles there, so. Unless this gentleman is from New England Termite?
No, he's only.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hit Harder Fitness is the next one.
Okay, great. Waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Bob Baldock. Owner's address is 246 Cottage Street, Springfield, Mass. 01104. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Hit It Harder Fitness LLC. Owner business is Kimberly Ewing. Business owner's address is 14 Melvin Avenue, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is 632 North Main Street. Property district is owned business, allowed use is yes. Post hours of operation are 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. However, they may be adding more in the future. Summary of business is fitness studio for one or more personal training and large group classes. There'd be no commercial vehicles. There'd be equipment only. The application has been signed and dated March 20, 2018.
Okay, so this is the Pride Plaza in the north end, and it's an allowed use in the zone. Any questions or?
I'll make a motion to waive the site plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, so site plan waiver is approved. We have a signed permit for them. May I just do that at the same time?
Okay, town of East Long Meadow, sign permit application dated March 8, 2018. Business name and address is Hit It Harder Fitness LLC, 632 North Main Street. Business owner's name and address is Kimberly Ewing, 14 Melvin Avenue, East Long Meadow. Property owner's name and address is Bob Dole, Pride Limited Partnership, 246 Cottage Street, Springfield, Mass. Contact person and telephone number is Tina Mancuso. Phone number is listed here. Square footage of proposed sign is 10 feet, well, it's not, I don't think it's here correctly. Total square footage of proposed sign is 10 feet, 3 inches. I'm guessing this is what they meant. Freestanding is no. Height above the ground is 10 feet. Attached to the building is yes. Projected, if any, is none. Setback from property line is zero feet. Distance atop the sign above vertical walls 13.5 feet. The permanent signs illuminated. Number of existing signs is zero. Apparently, there's an existing frame, it says here. Total square footage of existing signs is 30. Total number of proposed signs is one. Total square footage of proposed signs is 30. Total square footage of proposed and existing signs is 30. See attached for more details. The applicant, Kimberly Ewing, has been signed. The estimated cost is $750, and sign affidavit is no. Business owner to install themselves.
We have a picture of this. This will be the same sign as the other signs in the.
Make a motion to approve the sign permission.
Subject to the approval of the building inspector?
Yep.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, so you got your sign and you got your waiver. This, the paperwork will be available roughly when? Probably by Monday, right?
By Monday.
By Monday.
Probably before that.
Okay, very good. Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Okay, next one.
East Long Meadow requests for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Anthony Basio. Owner's address is 20 Somerset Street. Owner's telephone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Dreamscape Properties. Owner business is Marco Basio. Business owner's address is 20 Somerset Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is 20 Somerset Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is C. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Data last parking plan is not applicable. Summary of business, real estate investment. The application has been signed and dated March 21, 2018.
Okay, you're here for this?
Yeah.
Tell us about it, because originally it was a landscaping business.
Yeah, this is another business.
Okay, we haven't dealt with the landscaping business yet. I know, fine.
Yeah, you have.
Have we? Okay, we did that, but okay, come, come on forward. Sorry, my memory is not always. So tell us what you're planning on doing.
Same thing, it's just going to be a home office. We're planning on having paperwork, and I just want to legitimize it by having a business.
It's going to have the same name as?
It's a different name, Dreamscape Properties, whereas Dreamscape Designs Landscaping.
Okay, okay, so this one is called?
It just says Dreamscape Properties.
Properties, okay, I got it, I got it. Okay. Have a motion?
Motion to waive the site plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I won't see you for a while.
Okay, the last one we have here is Chau Bella.
Yep, we can hear this. East Long Meadow requests for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Eric Byrd, trustee. Owner's address is East Long Meadow, Mass. Okay, there's no street address or anything. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Chau Bella Salon. Owner business is Christine O'Connell, Ford James Circle, Wolverham, Mass. Property address is 128 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is business, is allowed use. Pose hours are Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Data last parking plan is 2006. Summary of business operations is a hair salon, manicure, hairstyling, spray tan, and you probably can do a better job.
Esthetician.
Okay, thank you. Application has been signed and dated March 21, 2018.
This is, this is an existing business, this is another stylist going in, is that right? Okay, so this is an existing salon, somebody's come in for a new booth, basically.
Make a motion to waive the site plan?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. We have a little time now. I'd like to do a little bit of what you were talking about, and on one of the administrative issues is, we, I had been talking with Larry Smith and with Kevin Duquette about the possibility of changing our zoning bylaw to allow the building inspector to determine whether a sign permit meets zoning, and then to issue the building permit for that without having to get a sign permit from us. Okay. The, the theory being that the building inspector has to make the determination of whether or not the sign meets zoning anyway. That's the zoning determination, okay? It's really up to him to say, does it meet the requirements in the zoning bylaw. After we approve a sign permit, it has to go to them anyway for a building permit or, or for approval. And so we're just an additional step in there. And since we don't really have the authority to say, well, we don't like the colors on your sign, they ought to be something different, you know, or we don't like the way you spelled that word. Really, all we're doing is repress stamping these things. And it slows it up to the applicant, and it clutters our calendar. So, I don't know how you feel about that. Sign permits are pretty straightforward usually. I haven't really run into a controversial one. The controversy usually is what constitutes a sign. And that comes up when you have something like NAPA Auto Parts, where the sign, the background of the sign is a certain color, and then the rest of the building is the same color. Okay, so where's the sign, and where's the building, and where does it start, and where does it stop? Same thing on gas stations, where the canopy sign usually has the same color, the company colors all the way around, but the sign is only a certain part of that. But that's, again, is a determination that's really up to the building commissioner to make that. So, to clear up our calendar without jeopardizing the protection of the town, the thought is to modify the zoning bylaw to allow that to happen, that we don't have to review the signs that the building inspector would have to review the signs. We would leave in all of the dimensional and other requirements for signs, but we would delegate the authority to approve those to the building inspector. I would think that we would still want him to sign off on a sign permit, so that there is a record of what the sign was supposed to look like, okay, as opposed to a building permit, which is, goes into a different file. But that way, if, if someone complains that the sign wasn't what was approved, there's some piece of paper that says, you know, but it would be signed off by the building inspector rather than by the planning board. Any thoughts on that?
I, I think it's a great idea. I think the building inspector, if he gets into a situation where he's a little bit confused, he's got the option of sending it to us for review, but if he feels comfortable approving or denying, I think he should have the authority to do that.
So the only question I have is, so would it go for temporary signs and for banners as well?
That's a good point. I guess the question there is for how, we don't really have anything in the bylaw that says for how long a temporary sign would be permitted.
Yeah, usually we, we put a restriction on it when they come. So if we put something in the bylaw that there would be a temporary sign, good for no more than X amount of days.
And he's the one that enforces that anyway.
Yeah, so, you know, as long as we had that kind of language in there. Then the thing with, with just the banners, which I find is different from temporary signs sometimes, you know, they become unsightly, you know, they get ripped, the wind blows them away, kind of deal, and we're trying to improve the image of the town, and they don't improve the image of the town, so. But I'm all, the concept, I'm all in favor for. I'm in favor of.
It may need a little work in terms of wording.
Yeah, but yeah, I'm in favor of the concept, yeah.
Me too.
So what, what I would?
Oh, no, I agree.
We're waiting for you.
You've got to let us know how you feel, Lou.
Yeah, no, no, I do, believe me.
And among other things, this would speed up the process for the applicants, because they've got to order the sign and get it installed, and if they had to wait another two weeks for us to have a meeting, that just slows down their opening the business, or they go ahead and put the sign up anyway, at their jeopardy, in case we don't approve it, okay, and then they've got real money in it, it, it's a problem. Yeah, on the temporary signs, again, I think if we put it in the bylaw the right way, then we can come up with something. So what I'm going to suggest is that, that may be one of the first things that we'll put before Connie, once she comes in.
Sure.
And probably schedule a hearing sometime in May, maybe the second meeting in May.
Sure.
So we've got time for her to look into it and draft the language, and then we can advertise it. And that's a tentative timeframe, so that we can get that done.
I agree.
Okay. The other issue that Larry has brought up, and I want to mention, we mentioned this last time, but since he's going away, to bring it up one more time, is on the waivers of site plan. He feels strongly that we ought to have different levels of requirements for waivers depending on what the business is. Like, if a business, if it's a retail business going in where retail business used to be, does it really require a waiver of site plan? Okay, that's his, his contention. My thought is a little bit more conservative, that we need to look at each business that's proposed to go in, because you don't want to be surprised by a business going in, and you go, well, that wasn't really what we thought it was going to be, you know, like our friends that proposed to go in on Shaker Road. It's a retail business, okay? And if you don't have that step of applying for the waiver, you really have no control. And he feels that bylaw could be written that would give us control where needed, but not clutter up the agenda and not slow people down.
Yeah, my only concern with that is the, the frequency of clients, customers, from one retail to the next. One might require a lot more parking space than, than the other, depending on, you know, what the, the sales are going to be in that.
Restaurant versus a men's clothing store?
Yeah, something as simple as that, yeah. But, but, yeah, I'm not there yet where I would want to give up the site plan. I think it's a, I think it's a tool for us.
Right.
I like the concept that Larry's talking about, but I certainly see the issues, so because of that, I think I'm more inclined to agree with what you're saying.
Yeah. Maybe this is something, again, where we should ask Connie?
When she's on board.
When she's on board, and what, what has happened in the other towns? How do they deal with it? Larry seems to feel that this, this waiver issue is something that's special to East Long Meadow. I'm not sure that it is, but because it's, it's something that's more in procedure than it is in the bylaw itself, it's hard to figure it out from other towns without going to their meetings, you know, but it's some.
But she's worked in a number of communities, so maybe she has an idea that would satisfy both sides of that.
Yeah. I mean, where it comes from right now is we require a site plan for every new business, okay, and then we allow ourselves to waive it. That, that's the way the bylaw is written, okay? Theoretically, we could require a site plan for every new business, but that would be kind of onerous for, you know, like the lady that was here tonight for, for Fitness Place, to have to go and have the place surveyed and put in all the parking spaces and all that. Just to open up a fitness salon adds another significant cost to doing that that really doesn't add value.
Although what, just as using that example, what business is she replacing in that plaza?
Well, apparently, it's an empty storefront now. I don't know what was in there.
I mean, prior, I mean, there was a beauty salon in there, there was a computer repair place in there.
There was a dance place in there.
A dance place in there.
There was a protein supplement, supplement.
That was a busy space.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I mean, you know, I wish her well, and, you know, hopefully she has much success, but that might be, you know, the amount of traffic that generates is compared to a computer repair shop would be considerably different. And I think we would want the opportunity to still be able to look at that.
Yeah.
So in the future, as, as we rebuild that department, some of the things that are done by you all, just, that's the way it's been, might be able to be done administratively, and your planner gives you a report, so that you're well aware, and maybe a recommendation that, you know, this one, this one, this one be waived, and if not, then, then they have to come. So there might be a balance there of, you're still informed, but that's what you have staff there for.
See, the other thing I'd like to see when she comes in, and we can talk, but obviously, you know, like definitions, I think, need some tightening up.
Right.
You know, things like, so just using this example of waiving the site plan, you know, I think of an accountant's office being different than, let's say, an H&R Block. They're still doing taxes, but the amount of retail component and all of that, and you'd like to see, you know, those distinctions made, and then maybe we could then incorporate, if you go from a, what we define as professional, one professional to another professional office, you don't need a site plan review, you know, something, so where we can start parsing it a little.
So similar uses may require, different uses do require.
Yeah, even, even under the guise of retail, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that's something I think we really need to look into.
So that, again, probably goes to what you all were talking about, about like a workshop part of your meeting where, with a new planner and a new secretary and a new building official, new everything, that you said some parameters around what you think is, is, are things to really look at differently.
Yeah, Deb, Deb mentioned, I think, just chit-chatting one night about, there used to be, there used to be, or she'd like to see brought back a design?
Committee.
Design review committee?
There is one in the bylaw.
Okay.
And has, has not existed for as long as I've been on the board.
George, was it a subcommittee of the planning board?
No, it was an independent committee that may or may not have had a planning board member on it.
Wouldn't you want one?
Well, it's, it's right here in the bylaw. Let's look it up and see what it says. But it, the idea was to have experts in the field who would be able to review a, for instance, the subdivision, okay, and, and present, design review. It comes under site plan, and let's see what we found here. 719.
Is this a zoning bylaw or general bylaw?
The zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw, not the subdivision, you know, comes under site plan review. Purpose, the intention of the section, et cetera. Design review committee. Design review committee is established in accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, shall be appointed by the planning board to serve for a period of three years with a member rotation every three years after the initial two-year period, and consists of five members with the following credentials, if possible. The planning board administrator as the committee chair, one person qualified in architecture or landscape design, one person owning and/or operating a business in East Long Meadow governed by this bylaw, one at-large resident of the town, and one member of the board of directors of the East Long Meadow Chamber of Commerce.
That's an interesting group.
Okay.
It is.
That board has, as far as I know, has, maybe, they may have used that for the Rocky Center when that went in, but beyond that, I have never heard of that board being in existence, much less reviewing anything, okay? But that would be the kind of board that you would want if the mixed-use development went in.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, to review. And, you know, the question becomes, well, what can they actually, you know?
Yeah, that was my next point.
Well, it basically comes down to what, what can you do in site plan? Okay, what can you actually control in site plan, and what can you not control? And there's a lot that you can control, and there's a lot that you can suggest. You can say that this design doesn't meet, is inconsistent with the rest of the town, okay?
Or even the neighborhood.
Or even the neighborhood, or whatever, you know?
But it could be on commercial properties as well.
Yeah, I mean, anything that requires site plan review, okay? So, the problem was that there was very little business for that board, basically.
But I think appointing it just for a particular project could, could end up being a little dangerous.
Yeah.
Where if you have them in abeyance that, you know, we're not going to need you all the time, but we will need you for, you know, a big building or whatever, that, you know, if, if the planning board could appoint that.
Well, for example, let's talk about 330 Chestnut. I mean, that's going to be a big project with lots of design elements. I think that would be a good case for a design review committee.
But even a subdivision, a big subdivision, you could.
Yeah, yeah. And another one was the building is under construction on Charlie Richards' former property, the medical building. To me, it looks nice, but, which, which, again, we could have used it for there, too.
Which, which property?
The one next to, behind the funeral home.
Oh, thank you, because that's the one I had in mind when I was thinking of that.
Yeah, because, I mean, it looks okay, but that would have been a good example where that would have been a good thing to have.
And this Red Rock subdivision is going to be a little tricky, you know, that that?
It'd be a lot tricky.
To have, yeah.
You know, one thing I was going to think about is, shouldn't this be appointed by the planning board, or should it be appointed by the town administrator with the advice of the planning board?
Oh, I thought it said the planning board.
It says, it says the planning board, but.
And that's fine with me, too.
Okay.
We're trying to put it back on you, Denise.
I think Denise is all set for that, George.
I don't mind, if, if you all feel that, that's the way you'd want to go, certainly we can do that. But it would be with recommendations from you all as to who should be appointed.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we could just leave it the way it is and not change the bylaw. The problem, the thing would be to implement this.
Right.
And, and that's something that.
Again, when you bring, poor Connie.
Yeah.
In fact, why don't we pull one together, because if this 330 Chestnut does go forward, we're going to need it then. I'd rather do it now than do it when that project gets, if it does get approved.
You don't want it to be pointing to a particular project, because then you could end up in.
Well, maybe people ought to start thinking about who these other four people might be. Again, someone qualified by training experience in architecture or landscape design, someone operating a business located in East Long Meadow governed by the bylaw, an at-large resident of the town, and a member of the board of directors of the East Long Meadow Chamber of Commerce. Is there an East Long Meadow Chamber of Commerce?
Well, it's not East Long Meadow.
It's now the east of the River.
East of the River, right.
But there are East Long Meadow members.
Oh, there are members, but it's called the East of the River Chamber.
So you'd have to change.
That would have to be, or, or just put a East Long Meadow Chamber of Commerce, or its equivalent, something like that, you know, it's, this is where, because the zoning bylaw hasn't been thoroughly reviewed in so long, there's all these little inconsistencies in here, and stuff that isn't being done that, you know. So that's another thing on the, on the, my list for our new administrator to discuss. I mean, a couple of other things that I, you know, aside from the major projects, is.
So can people just go to us? So where are we with 330 Chestnut Street? Where, has it gone?
We don't know yet.
It's still with the subcommittee.
Oh, okay.
Still with the subcommittee.
Yeah, they're, they're meeting again next, I think, next Wednesday, after Connie has been here a couple of days. Welcome, Connie. Here you go.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
But it's eventually, it's still with, with the council, okay? And, and nothing, the developer hasn't changed anything yet, and the council has not made any decisions, so it's, it's out of our hands at the moment. And the council has not made any decisions, so it's, it's out of our hands at the moment.
Right, so this, this subcommittee will then report to the council and then the council will hear about that.
The, the other thing that I intend to bring up is the master plan, which is dated, is it nineteen seventy-six, I believe? Okay? Interestingly, it calls for mixed use development back in nineteen seventy-six.
Really?
Yes. There, which I provided the, the details to the member of the, of the committee, of the subcommittee.
Pretty forward-thinking plan of development back then.
Yeah, it wasn't the site that we're looking at, it was a site close by. They were looking at the lots lining Shaker Road below what's now Great Woods. Okay?
Yep.
Right along Shaker Road there on the, on the east side of Shaker. That may not be the right place to put it today, but the concept was there that that would be a good thing to do. So it is in the master plan, but the master plan is horribly out of date. You know, we're talking forty years out of date. So that needs to be addressed. It's not cheap to do, okay? Doing a master plan can, can be expensive, but we can't, I can't see how we can go forward without a master plan.
Don't you buy state law? Don't you have to have a, well, we do have a master plan, but it doesn't say that it needs to be updated after ten years?
Yes, it does.
Or reviewed every five or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's not enforced.
Yeah.
The only way that master planning is enforced by the state is that if you don't have a current master plan, you can't get certain grants. Okay? But since the town has not looked for grants in the past, it hasn't affected us. And so therefore, the town has not bothered with the master plan.
The, the town, maybe about eight months ago, we became a compact community.
Okay.
So that, so that we can apply for grants. I'll check to see if master plan is one of the things that we can apply for a grant for, because that would at least be a, a good piece, you know, to start. And I've, I've overseen getting one of those updated. And a planner can do pieces of it, knowing the flavor, and Connie doesn't yet know the flavor of the community, although she's from around here, so she does a little. But the planner can do pieces of it and you can hire a consultant for, as you get to a special sec, like recreation or business or industrial or a particular zone that you really want to hone in on. So there are ways of tackling it that you don't have to spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars in one year.
Agreed. The, the key thing is to, where a consultant can really help is to make sure that the plan meets the state requirements. And what I mean by that is every several years, they change the requirements. And so what they, they, they will say, you need to have a section on this, you need to have a section on that. And if the section says demographics and they now say it's got to be titled population characteristics, you've got to make it say population charact.
And they, yeah.
You know, it's all this little niggling detail.
And they know it inside and out.
Because they wrote it.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, a consultant.
The consultants know how to do that, yeah.
They have templates for it, so.
Yeah, and that saves you a lot of time. There's also a lot of graphics that need to be generated for something like this and a lot of data that needs to be updated, including census data and income data and all that sort of thing. So it's, it's not a small undertaking, but it's not impossible. And I think after forty years, we deserve a plan that's up to date.
It needs to be done in conjunction with the planning board, but with the community at large, what they want to see is their future plan, their town center, their flavor of the community kind of thing.
Yeah. And definitely in conjunction with the town council. We do not want to get a plan that then goes to the council and is either rejected or is picked apart and put back together again.
Or not adhered to because they don't agree with it, yeah.
Well, the, the thing, the key thing is that we, we have agreement going forward so that we don't end up arguing amongst ourselves once it's done. That you should have done it this way.
Yeah, we never liked that anyway, yeah.
We don't do that, we don't do that. So, but again, that, that's going to be something that will not happen overnight, but I think that would be a priority, you know?
How do we go about getting our design committee going?
Well, I think we, we have a bylaw that authorizes us to appoint. What we need to do is to find four people who are willing to serve on that, who we think would be appropriate to do this.
My office can help by, we've advertised, March has advertised for other committees. So if, if you want to do that, we can certainly.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, it's advertised. It's advertising.
Yeah, we do it cheap now, we do it as a press release rather than a, like a wanted ad.
Sure.
So what bylaw is that?
This is seven point four point two, on page seven twenty of the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And it refers to chapter forty-eight, which, design review, it's going to be in here somewhere.
So we can gather the applications?
Yes.
For you and then?
But I, I would also recommend that if anyone knows of anyone they think would be appropriate for this and be willing to serve, that they contact them and because, as Denise does, putting out a press release doesn't always get a response.
No.
But if you know somebody you think would be appropriate, then that would be great.
They would have to be an East Long Meadow resident, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just to run any community.
That's kind of basic.
Yeah, I know someone just over the border who's an architect, that would be great, but he's in the wrong town, so.
We can see where in forty-eight it would be. Special permits, cost of living. What if there are no architects in East Long Meadow?
There are lots of architects in East Long Meadow. And there are lots of landscape architects.
There's lots of, yeah.
In fact, I, I know someone who's probably qualified as a landscape architect and would probably jump at this job.
Well, but is, is, does it need to be a landscape architect or can it just be a landscaper?
Either or.
No, it says landscape architect in, in the bylaw. But there are a number of people who are operating as landscapers who are qualified as landscape architects, one of whom has been on the planning board in the past, so.
So I want to be sure of the parameters for.
Yeah. So I'm going to see here if there's anything here in design review. Quickly. I'm going to have to research redesign review things out of forty-eight, but it must be there somewhere. Okay, so, you know, these are the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about going forward. And this is, Tye, what you're talking about, we got time, we can talk.
Which is great.
It's in public.
We should make all of our public hearings maybe eight, eight and thirty, nine.
Oh, get carried away now.
Saturday morning. Friday night's better.
There you go.
I will tell you though, one thing I would like to see, and I think the town should institute this as well. You may think I'm crazy, but I really think that we should have a dress code for people who come before the board. I think it's inappropriate to have people come with caps on, with t-shirts, with.
Shorts.
Sunglasses.
Sunglasses. I, I don't mind if people come in their work clothes, but at least, you know, it should be, if we don't expect a certain amount of decorum, I think it just continues to get worse. I, I don't know if it's just the planning board should do that or whether it should be something, it should be considered town-wide on all of there. But there, there does need to be a certain decorum. And they're asking the town for something of value and I don't think that it's really crazy to, to ask it.
Well, I think, yeah, I think that's something that we ought to encourage. I'm not sure what our authority.
I don't enforce that, yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't hear them.
Well, I, I would.
They've done a legal application.
Suggest, suggest that we might want to consult town council.
Oh, yeah, that's why, just throwing it out, just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
I'm sure it won't be as well received as other things I've talked about.
This is not a court of law where we can hold somebody in contempt, but. No, seriously, I, we, what we can encourage, I, I think enforcement would be, that would have to, you'd have to look at case law for that. There's nothing in the state statutes.
Well, we've talked about for the last nine months also, and I know that you've done a really nice job kind of bringing the department along. So thank you for doing that. But we also just, you know, we can't read people's writing.
Yeah, but that was good, I was going to bring that up next because.
I mean, it's.
Well, we've already talked about that with Tracy and she's asking people, as you can see, to rate, which was clearly.
All right, good, because it was getting, getting good and now it's been bad for the last two months.
We, we also, I've also.
I have bad writing, so I know.
So, you know, two things, I've also talked with Tracy about the fact that all of the forms are available online until in-able. The problem is they appear in three different places, okay? They appear on the planning department page, there are links, that's the most complete one. They appear on the planning board page where not all of the links are there. And then there is a section of the town website called forms with a section for planning board, and there's only one or two forms there. And so we ought to have all the forms in all three places so that somebody doesn't have to trace back and forth.
Take a piece or only have half an application because they thought they had it all.
Sure. And, and if you don't know the exact name of the form you're looking for, the search engine doesn't work all that well. Okay? So this is one of those administrative things that we, we need to get straightened out. The other thing that's really good is that Tracy and Larry together have put together a sheet of paper that says if you are filing for a special permit or a site plan or a waiver of site plan, these are the steps you need to take in this order.
Excellent.
Okay? So that when somebody comes up and says, what do I have to do? Tracy doesn't have to tell them the same thing over and over and over again. She can hand them a piece of paper and if there's a particular step they don't understand, they can ask her about it. But it's going to save her time, I hope, by me being able to, I don't know if you've tried that yet or not.
I have, there's, there's actually some conflicting information that I'll talk to you about, you know? When one says eight copies, the other says six copies.
Well, we can work that out and straighten it out. But this is the kind of thing I think we need to have going forward, is I want to start a business, what do I have to do? Okay, here's, in East Long Meadow, here's what you have to do. And if you've got any questions, ask us, but this is the procedure. And that way it's the same for everybody.
Consistent, yeah.
Yeah.
Consistent communication.
Yeah. Okay, we've got six forty-five, we have a continuation of a special permit amendment for pride convenience at three North Main Street.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So, last time we were discussing your request for hours, which were until, what was it?
One o'clock.
At one o'clock. And people wanted some time to think this over and to look at the lighting situation. Do you have anything to add at this point?
A couple of things, we have, there were two comments of, when you had asked for comments from the various departments. One was by the health department that said there were some open issues. They have since corrected that and said that it was an error and there were no open issues.
Okay.
The other is, the fire chief had said he wished that the striping, the filing striping would be updated. And it has been, we have pictures to show you.
Oh, excellent.
Okay, good.
I'd also, I thought also about the, some of the comments from your neighbors. One of them was continuing comment whenever we come that sidewalks never get shoveled. And I would just like to point out for the record that was the first year we owned the property, it was about an eight-foot section of sidewalk that we didn't even know existed. It was right next to the road and was totally covered by what the city plows had put in. And we've since shoveled it every time. The other was that we weren't a good neighbor because once a branch fell on his property, we didn't pick it up. And I'm not exaggerating, that's the type of stuff we've been up against here.
Sure.
But we do run a quiet business. People come in and if they buy fuel or go into the store, they don't make any noise. And one o'clock is still less than Bentley's, which has the, the opportunity to make more noises as patrons are leaving.
Sure.
And, and most of all for competitive purposes, so that we might be the same as a competitor down the street. And although it's said that they're in an industrial district, the fact is that that competitor down the street is directly across from a residence and closer in fact than any of the residences are next to ours. Thank you.
And seeing nobody from the public, I will take you back to the board for questions or comments.
So I do want to address the competitive issue. So you have another property or another business that you operate at six eighteen North Main Street.
Correct.
And you were in for twenty-four hours there. This board said no, and if I'm not mistaken, the very next day you went to twenty-four hours.
Well, that's not true. This board said, and we have copies of the minutes, this board said you may continue to, they basically didn't say anything. They said you can continue to do what you're doing or something like that. But we pointed out during that hearing that there are no hours on it. And in fact, that, that any discussion of hours was that deliveries would be made during the early morning, during the overnight hours, which was that they wanted deliveries. And it was assumed that we would be open twenty-four hours, we were not, but we felt that we should. And since this board did not really say we couldn't, and since there's no requirement as to one or the other, we in fact only came before this board for that property for completeness because we felt for, let's say fairness and honesty, because we wanted you to know what we were doing.
But you.
But we could have gone to twenty-four hours then because there is no restriction and there still isn't.
Am I, am I correct that that, yeah, hours of operation at that site are currently under litigation?
That's correct.
That's correct, so I, it would be inappropriate.
I'm not litigating.
I understand that, but because it's under litigation, I think it would be inappropriate to bring that part of it into it. Russ?
No, I will not agree with that.
Well, I, as, as chair, I'm ruling that.
I'm making a point on competition.
I, I, I understand that, but, okay, anything that this board says in public is public record.
Fine, okay.
We need to be very careful about discussing anything that's under litigation in a meeting, okay? Because that can come back and be brought into part of the litigation. And since we're not aware of the status of that right now and what town council or town attorney position is, I think it's inappropriate of us to discuss that in, in, in a meeting. Not, nothing against you, Mr. Holder, I just don't want to get in a position of us saying things, okay, that may or may not be informed, that will come back to bite us.
So listen to me.
Yes.
Just listen. So there was a representation that they want to be on the same level of competition as another entity, as another location.
Right, as long as we're talking about thirteen North Main Street.
So, the point is, there is another entity, there is another property in town that has even expanded out, who is operating in more expanded hours than the one o'clock.
But that.
And that's the point that I'm making.
But that operation, okay, whether or not that is a legitimate expansion is under litigation and it's not something that we should be weighing in on.
Then I say that we don't, then my recommendation is that we not vote until that has been resolved.
Well, I, I, that, that's fine, but I, I don't want to discuss that site.
Tye, what do you think?
If you're not going to discuss that site, then let's wait until it's been resolved.
I mean, I didn't go into this wanting to do that, I was ready to vote.
Yeah.
But I did want to address that point. But if you're saying I can't address the point, you know.
Do you want to weigh in on this?
You're not speaking of, of a particular business, but rather that there is another business that has different hours, is that correct?
There is another gas station slash convenience store that is now operating in expanded hours beyond the one AM. That is, that was voted on, on the Shaker Road property.
So is your concern that, that this expansion could then go to the even more hours, is that your point?
No, my concern is. No, my concern is, the other property happens also to be owned by the same company. So, you've got a store that's open till 1:00 a.m., you have a store that's operating 24 hours. So the concept of competition is that this store can compete with the one that's open till 1:00 a.m. And it's the same, and one is, they happen to be owned by the same party.
I, I think, I think I'm gonna...
I'll take your advice, but, you know...
George, since he's put me in this file, but that, we probably shouldn't use that as an example for that, only because it really, we're contesting that that's, that 24 hours is correct.
And we don't, we don't know that, that we don't know whether it will continue in 24 hours or not?
I know.
And we have no way of knowing how that's gonna turn out. So, to bring that up as an example of something that, that going forward will be there, we don't know. And it's, since it's in the courts...
Whether, whether it was owned by Baltic or owned by Smith, it probably wouldn't make a difference in that it probably shouldn't enter into this discussion here.
Yeah.
Well, in a courtroom, the judge would say, you opened the door. So, they opened the door with a competition issue. So, I'm just pointing it out.
Right, I just, you know, you hear what I'm coming from, Russ.
Yep.
You hear what I'm coming from?
By the way, when do we think that will be resolved?
I, I don't have any update on it.
I have no idea.
So I still have more, if I could.
What?
I have more.
Please.
So, nothing I should be controversial about. So we did, we did, I thought that you had made assertions that you would be, okay, creating a screening with vegetation along the back of the, what I guess is referred to as the Romito.
We installed the stockade fence. No, we didn't, and here's a question, we're talking about two different sites here.
Yeah.
Two different properties.
Right.
Now, we were unsure as to where you wanted the screen, whether it was on the back of the Romito site or in the back of the mobile site. We felt it must be the mobile, because the Romito site is not under discussion, although the neighbor kept bringing it up.
Sure.
So we, we added to the stockade fence at the mobile site. Because that's the cited question. Now, in the future, we clearly hope to come back before you with a remodel plan for the Romito site, and it will be gorgeous. And it will have at least all of the required setback and landscaping requirements between the Romito site and all neighbors. It'll probably exceed the requirements, and we think the town will be very happy with the entire design. And, but since we're not discussing that tonight.
Right.
But, but for now, the, even the property owner who complained, who didn't specify if he was complaining about the mobile site or the Romito site, didn't complain about the need for a screen anyway, because we don't make any noise, and we don't cause any problem. And both sites have been there for years, as is, and he's never complained before. So we think he was just talking.
I, my recollection of it, it was more of the lighting.
The lighting, there was, there was only one operational light, the other one is out of order and buried between 20 feet of vegetation, way up in the trees, and the other one has not been turned on since and won't be turned on.
And you were also going to do something about the pickup, the dumpster, early morning pickup? You said you had spoken to USA Halling?
I don't know, I don't think the dumpster comes at the early morning now.
I think you, I think you had made the representation that it comes at 6:00, but you had spoken to USA Halling, and it would be...
Well, then if that's what happened, then that's what happened.
Later. So can we make that a condition of the permit?
Yes, you may, yes, you may.
Okay.
And it's probably already been handled. If I said it was already handled, then it was. But I didn't do anything about it this time, because it hasn't, it has never been a problem. Anyways.
Dumpster's actually locked now, so you can't even access it.
Yeah, well, we did have none, we did have residents or someone using the dumpster lock, and it's not, but that, but that's a common problem, we're used to that all over. The industry is used to that.
Some people use locks.
You know what, but they just pile it next to it. We do use locks, but they just pile it next to it or behind it.
It's a real problem, I understand.
And it's, it's just, it's, it's, it's an attractive, they are, they are all attractive nuisance.
Sure. Lou, any? No, I, I don't, I've kind of blocked North Main Street out. I never put that in my head at all, I kind of kept that out because it's under litigation.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't have anything else to add.
I don't have any more to say.
The only, I, I know that you've applied for expanding the time for selling beer and wine.
Only to the legal hour.
To 11 o'clock.
To add one hour.
Yeah.
For some reason, that location, when that, that permit was originally issued to, to the previous owner.
Yeah.
It was set at 10:00.
Yeah, for whatever reason.
And the, the legal hour is 11:00, and we just, but we're open till 11:00 anyway.
Right.
And again, you know, when people come in, you don't know if they're buying a glass, a bottle of wine, or a candy bar, I mean, who cares?
Yeah, yeah. Well, wine probably is a big profit margin, but... You know, my feeling is that some expansion of the hours could, could be appropriate. What I would suggest to the board is that we entertain a motion to expand the hours to midnight, and see if there are any additional complaints, and if not, then, or for a period of time, you know, Mr. Baldock can come back, and if he's busy at midnight, you know, and people are driving up at 11:59, and he's gotta shut the door on them, he can come back and, and ask for the additional hour. And that would be my suggestion, I don't know how the board would react to that.
At the last meeting, I said 11 o'clock is what I felt better with. And the second thing is, if this site is gonna come back before site plan review for an expanded operation, including the Romito's property, I'd like to readdress everything again, seeing what the new site plan, the new operation's gonna look like. But if the whole board's gonna feel midnight is appropriate, I guess I'm not gonna get too concerned over 11 o'clock versus 12:00, but my preference is 11 o'clock. But I would like to see it readdressed again when, if there's another site plan that comes forward with the expanded property.
I mean, just a point, absolutely, if or when Mr. Baldock comes back with a new site plan for another facility or a combined facility, or whatever he comes back with, it's gonna be a new site plan, if it's a special permit, it's gonna be a new special permit, because it's gonna be very different from what he's doing now overall. And so, at that point, everything is on the table, okay? And the experience that we have with his operations between now and then will influence that, obviously, okay? I mean, that's the way it works. I gotta be honest, I'm really feeling more 11 o'clock.
So, so I'm gonna question you.
Okay.
On, on your, on your statement, and I'll just use Mr. Baldock's comments about, so he did not want to put the screening to the rear of the property because he felt it was, you know, it was a different parcel that we were dealing with.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and the Romito parcel is currently vacant anyways.
Right, right, but you, but you said it was a different parcel.
It is, it is.
So, I went and looked at the assessor's maps, and so, the Romito property is a separate parcel. So if you come in and address, you know, in your words, a beautiful facility, which I expect it to be, we're just gonna be dealing with that parcel. We won't then be turning around and dealing with 13 North Main Street.
We don't know that, we don't know that.
We don't, that's it, we don't know it.
I can answer that, it'll be a combined property.
Okay.
It'll solve all the problems that we've all known, it'll all be back from the Rotary, it'll be a combined property, it'll be all-new combined.
But that, that's something that is in the future, that's, that's Mr. Baldock's plans, it's not before us, okay?
That's my point.
And we don't, we really don't know what's gonna come before us until it comes before us.
Right.
So the point is, okay, that we're dealing with now is expansion of hours on an existing site. The question was, if the site is totally restructured, and whether it's one parcel or two parcels, okay? Whether he decides to do an A&R and make it one parcel, or whether he decides to do a redesign of a facility that spans two parcels, doesn't make a difference. What makes a difference is whether it's a new site plan for that part of the property. And at that point, again, it would be special permit, because it's a convenience store, it would all be on the table again. It has to be, that, that's the way it works. Okay? So, so do I, Lou, do you get, you get that?
Yep.
So, I'll entertain a motion from somebody for some hours. My recommendation is midnight? But?
Well, I, I think at the last meeting, I said I would be consistent, and for the property on Shaker, at the corner of Shaker and Chestnut.
Yeah.
I had recommended 11 o'clock, and got nowhere. So I'll just start with that motion again, 11 o'clock.
You recommended midnight on the Shaker Road?
I had originally spoken about, at a previous meeting, when I believe Mr. Kingston had put out 1:00, and then someone else mentioned midnight, and I said, well, wait a minute, what about 11 o'clock? So if it's not in the written minutes, it's certainly in the audio, that, that could be listened to.
The thing is, we ended up at midnight, right?
And we ended up at midnight, and I did make that motion, so you are correct about that, because there was no love for 11 o'clock. So, I, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, I then felt compelled to vote 1:00, because it had been sitting empty for what seems like months, so...
So, are you making a motion?
I'll have someone else if they wish to.
Aye. Go ahead, Lou, you're...
Well, I was gonna, I was at 1:00, so...
And I was gonna second your 11...
Just to stay consistent with Chestnut and Shaker.
And I was gonna second your 11 o'clock motion, had it, if that was gonna be your motion.
You can make it.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for 11 o'clock.
To expand the hours to 11:00 p.m., that's your motion. Do I have a second on that?
I'll, I'll second that.
Further discussion, does anyone wish to offer any amendments? Hearing now, let's vote on 11 o'clock. All those in favor of 11 o'clock, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, and let it go for two to one. And we can't do that. Okay, I'll, I'll vote aye, I'll make it three to one, and go for 11.
Is number the aye on 10? Hmm. Still 12, it's pretty different.
Well, let's, let's go to 11, see if there are any additional complaints, if, if it works, we can reconsider it.
So amending a special permit, you can do a majority, or do you need a supermajority?
Amendment.
I don't know that.
I, I think we can do it with a, no, I don't know. We shall have to.
Can we wait till the next meeting? Can you have a supermajority?
Well, to begin with, we have not actually closed the public hearing.
That's correct.
So, we... Could I say something? Yeah, please, please, may I be close?
That, as I recall, Mr. Denver, the last meeting, you said you could, will live with 12 as a compromise.
I, I really don't recall that.
And I said, I could live with, I said, and I said I could live with that too. And, and that would still be an hour short of any competitor. And again, I say, we're a quiet business, I mean, no one's gonna know. But for people who come in, we're still an hour short of the competitor. And, and I said I could live with that as a compromise. And I still think that would be fair, but to be two hours short of the competitor is anti-competitive when you have no reason for it, no justification for it. And, and this is a competitive world and a competitive country.
And you're in a highly competitive business.
And I'm in a highly competitive business, and I'm still being penalized for one, for an hour, but to be penalized for two hours, for no reason, no logical reason whatsoever, except that people are hung up on a time. The fact is, yes, we're open till 24 at the other, and nobody even knows it or cares except the customers who come in and take advantage of it, of the, of the service. But who cares? You know, in Springfield, we're open, in most of our towns throughout the Commonwealth and Connecticut, it's 24 hours, because we're in a 24-hour world. And as Mr. Channing argued, I thought eloquently last time, it's police, fire, it's lots of people who come in and take advantage of that. And nobody's harmed by it.
Okay, two things, I'm gonna invalidate the vote, because we didn't close the public hearing.
Okay.
And secondly, I'm gonna, I think we really do need a supermajority to amend this special permit, because you need a special, a supermajority to issue a special permit. So I'm gonna ask that we continue the public hearing, because we're short one person.
We understand.
Okay? Until the 17th, and try to resolve it at that point with the full board.
Okay. So, fine, we're gonna continue the public hearing. So, the purpose of special permits in the town zoning bylaws, special permit review process is, is intended to ensure a harmonious relationship between proposed development and its surroundings, ensure proposals are consistent with the purpose and intent of this bylaw, including impact on traffic, utility systems, and the character of the town. So, a discussion that I raised when we were dealing with certain issues is that not every Pride has a 24-hour opening, or beyond, an 11 o'clock opening. The places that I found on the Pride website have a similar character, I believe, as the center of East Long Meadow. So, that is where I'm coming from. Not everybody, you know, who serves on boards and commissions in this town was born and raised in East Long Meadow. There are certain people who moved here for certain reasons. One is the character of the town. You know, there are no drive-throughs and, you know, all those things that provide a certain character to the town. So, you know, I understand exactly where you're coming from, you raised the competitive thing, I was told I can't address the competitive issue, but I can address the character of the, of the town. The immediate surrounding area besides Bentley's, across the street is Rockies, it closes at 8:00. Starbucks, I think, is closed at 10:00. There's nothing else in the center of the town that in my best, just visualizing it...
Lady Helen Sinsgrove.
I'm sure they're open till 2:00, they're buried in back, where you can't, they're not surrounded by any, well, they're not even close to any residents, I mean, back there. The Health Club closes at 10:00, the, what used to be the Dairy Mart closes at 6:00 for, you know, there's, so there is a certain, in my mind, it would change the character. So, but, that, that's just me.
Point won't take it.
So, that's just me.
And that, and...
No, I see your point exactly with Bentley's, I mean, I didn't think that was the best location for it, would have preferred that it not be located there, but I wasn't involved in the town when that came up.
But, but that type of business, you would expect it, and it, it also doesn't affect, impact anyone. I'm sure that, I don't think there's any noise or problems there for neighbors, I don't know.
Yeah.
But they seem to be a well-run business.
I actually sat through early on a couple of meetings with the former board selectmen about noise issues with, with, but that's, you know...
The character of the town is, is changing with...
It is.
Five Guys coming in. So, you know, the world is changing.
Which I took a lot of grief about, Five Guys, and I was happy to do it, but...
Okay, do I have a motion to continue this?
Yeah, I'd just say, just two cents at some point.
Yeah, please, please.
Because I'm not gonna be here the 17th.
Okay, well, we can do it a different day.
No, no, 17th will be fine, I think Mr. Baldock can handle it by himself, I can go out on a limb. But, but just in terms of, a couple of points I feel obligated to make, and I'm concerned we'll continue it. In terms of the districts, obviously comparing industrial district to business district is what some people have mentioned, and I think the business district itself, some businesses are... And I think the business district itself, some businesses are able to stay open till 2:00. Put in the pizza shop in Shaker Bowl. So then you get into the center of town, whether or not that's actually still a business district. If you wanted a center-of-town overlay district, that's obviously something the planning board at some point could choose to create as they are doing other districts. But as of right now, it's an A business district regardless of where it's located. And getting into the actual shell property, there's residences directly across the street from that, less than whatever the width of Shaker Road is. Regardless of this property, there's not a residence with over 125 feet from this property. And again, it's the back behind the building is where that's located. I do think that the police chiefs actually said it better than I could. In fact, it needs to be uniform. I think it's all, it's fair to allow, unless there's special circumstances. And the record I submit at this point doesn't have anything. Unless there's special circumstances, it should be appropriate to have uniform hours. I think police agreed to that DPW business, the fire chief, and in fact, Board of Health only took exception to some issues which were at a different property and were already addressed. And again, I'm not going to get into other properties or other businesses operated by Pride at this point, but I will just tell the board or remind the board that when the boards elected to include hours specifically in a special permit, they've allowed that business specifically to be open to 1:00. And that's what Pride's requesting at this point. And again, I think the screening, we did in fact put up a fence to protect any headlights or noise probably at over 100 feet from the next located residence, which again, is behind. The noise issues have been addressed, I believe. And again, I don't think I need to remind the board that regardless of the decision, if there were to be an issue, you have every right to bring us back before Pride, regardless of what the hours are. And so is it a hardship? Do I think, we can debate as to whether or not it would be appropriate to include it as 11: and then come back and see if we can go to midnight or go to 1:00, or vice versa, go to 1:00 and then bring it back down? I think on its face, there's no question why it shouldn't be 1:00. Just from a competitive standpoint, for what the board's previously allowed, most recently allowed to do at a competitive business, comparing again the business district and other businesses allowed in the business district. That being said, you, Mr. Bolduc, here representing that if the board were to vote to allow it to be midnight, I don't believe there'd be an exception taken by Pride for that. But I do think that with all due respect, if a vote were to be taken for 11 o'clock, that certainly, I think that would be something that would have to take exception to. And I'm just being blunt about it. And any reason aside from the fact that I'd like to state my opinion because I won't be here on the 17th?
Thank you. Having heard that, do I have a motion to continue this to the 17th at 6:45 p.m.?
I'm making a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we're continued. And hopefully at that time, we'll have a full board and we can deal with this.
And what time is that again, George?
6:45.
6:45.
We don't have a board, could I be notified? If we don't have a full board, could I be notified?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Making another objection that we don't have a full board, Mr. Bolduc will, and these are submitted as part of the-
And we don't have any other, we have other public hearings that night, right?
We have several of these hearings that night.
So none will, will, none are at the same, at 6:45?
No.
Okay.
We have two at 6:00, one at 6:30, and one at 6:45. So.
Connie's first meeting.
I'm sorry?
Connie's first meeting.
Yeah, it's going to be an interesting one.
She'll be fine.
Yeah. Any further business come before the board? Hearing now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of them in favor of adjourning?
Aye.